The Village Board of Trustees meeting for December 2, 2019 to order, and at this time I will take nominations for Chairman Pro Tem.
I'll nominate Heidi.
Second. Okay, just hang on one second. Any other nominations? No? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All yours, Heidi.
All right, thank you. Am I all right sitting over here?
You are.
Okay, thanks. So, we do have quorum, and Lisa, the agenda was properly posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great, well, I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item four, public appearances, public's opportunity to speak about any subject that is not a specific agenda item. Looks like everyone here, did you have any?
I did.
Okay, great. So, we'll move on to five, discuss and consider the minutes of the regular village board meeting on November 18, 2019. I did have one change. Item 11, closed session, I believe we must have entered at 7:37 instead of 8:37.
Okay.
Did anyone else have any changes?
I'll move to approve with that correction.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. All right, item six, we'll move on to presentations to the boards, so first we'll welcome Safe Built Services, and your Steve?
I am.
Hi, Steve, welcome.
Good evening, Bill of the Board, thanks for having me, it's an honor to be here, I appreciate you taking the time to dive into our services, and that we do so well, and have been doing for so long. So, a little bit working with Matt, he asked me to just touch a little bit briefly on the history of Safe Built, where we've been, where we came from, and how we got into Wisconsin, more importantly, and where we are here today. Feel free, of course, to stop at any time, I'm happy to dive into anything a little more closely as you see fit. But, Safe Built has been in business for about 27 years, so we started in Colorado, believe it or not, and I personally have been with Safe Built for about five years. I manage business development for a better part of the country, live in a western, northwestern suburb of Chicago, not too far from here. But, you know, it's kind of interesting story when people ask how did I got involved with the Safe Built, and how I even found out about it, and it's really an innovative kind of topic, and that's what brings us here today. I did give you folks a lot of information on us through the brochure that really kind of paints the picture for Safe Built. You know, we don't just provide one service, we're up to date 59 services, so more than what's even in that book. We're in about 1,500 communities across the country, big ones like the District of Columbia, Denver, Chicago, Milwaukee, and small communities that you wouldn't even think you even had a building department, and everything in between, and I think that's probably the biggest competitive advantage that we have, is our ability to be able to be flexible, customize our program, it's not a one size, but it's all, we understand each community's different, has its own needs, and we try to tailor our program to really be that seamless integration within your physical department. But, back to how I got involved with Safe Built, and in Safe Built, you know, I'm from Illinois, it's no secret, have quite a bit of family up here, and we have a pretty big organization here in Wisconsin, in fact, we have over 50 employees, we're in 55 communities here in the state of Wisconsin, another 60 just south of the border in northern Illinois, and it's consistently growing, the need is getting bigger. And, I'm a public servant like yourself, where I live in my town, Westmont, Illinois, I'm on my third term as a trustee there, and it was about six years ago, when I was on a committee level, just really volunteering to get involved, I heard Safe Built and folks talking about it, and at the time I worked for a firm that marketed water, wastewater systems, largest pump manufacturer in the world, Grunfoss, and I had a great job, really enjoyed it, a gentleman approached me and said, hey, Stephen, why don't you take a look at Safe Built, this is the norm out in the mountain states, and it's something that's new in the Midwest, privatizing the building department, and I'm thinking, I've never really heard of that. You know, we always privatize waste hall removal, we always privatize our auditors, our village attorneys, but rarely ever was this brought up yet, and it was kind of interesting, because, you know, it was something new to me, and I always like to dive into some things, and it was an RP for five communities in northern Illinois, Evanston, Willneka, Willmet, Kennelworth, and Glenview, and this was 2014, 2015, don't quote me exact on the date, but they went out to bid, they bound together all the mayors of villages, said, hey, we want to increase our buying power, and put out a bid for these services. So, this actually what brought Safe Built to Illinois, and then ultimately to Wisconsin, because we were successful then, actually just renewed the contract last year, but the interesting thing, how we came here, is we acquired a firm at that point, when we actually won that bid. Independent inspections, you might recognize the name, IIL, they have operations here in Florida, that's really how we grew in Wisconsin overnight, was through acquisition, and have been working it ever since. The nice thing about that story of the five communities that band together, as I alluded to a little bit ago, the same five went out to bid last year, but also seven more communities added to it, so now this whole area of northern Illinois has increased their buying power, and are quite frankly doing a lot more with less by working with a firm like us, so all five of the original entities are still a client, and now six, I believe it's seven more are still, are on top as well. So, it's been a fun run after these five years, I mean, the numbers, when I started, we were in about 300 communities to now, what I just told you, I mean, that's just tremendous growth, and I think the exciting part is, is, and we were joking back here, there's a lot of work out, there really is, and it's progressive, innovative leaders like yourself that are seeing, hey, there might be a better way to do this, maybe we don't have to do it all in-house, maybe we can partner up, and the real reason in the Midwest where I think it works so well, is that development is like this, I mean, we know our weather, although it's not too bad today, and a month from now it's going to be just as bad here as it is where I live, there's really no building going on, and our development is just so cyclical to the weather, firms like us, really, we make our business off of coming in, and we call shaving the peaks off, being able to fluctuate that demand of development, so that you're given a consistent level of service, so there's no difference. If you come in tomorrow with 30 building permits, you want a firm that can maintain that and keep up with that. If the next day it's only one, you want a firm that isn't going to charge you for that staff that is not doing nothing. And that's really the innovative way that we price our proposal to you, I know you have it, or at least have seen it, we call our percentage of fee model, what that does is allows you to alleviate that risk from the village, so allows us to come in, we're saying we're committed to taking X percentage of the revenue to deliver the services, no matter how busy it is, if it's 20 new hotels coming up, or if it's, you know, just three or four small commercial entities, or just some residential permits, we staff it accordingly to the work. So, Lisa's been very good, and given us quite a bit of the activity that we asked for, so we understood, what's the permit levels, what type of projects are we seeing, now this is all historic, so we kind of, you know, we hedge our bet, and kind of prepare and plan our staffing model accordingly, but you can still get pretty close to that, and that's kind of the fun part of it, so based on all this data, really, you could vision every inspection, every permit that was pulled, we have a good understanding of what the workload is to expect, and that's how our proposal came to be, which we proposed a dedicated staff to be able to cover that. There's a couple differentiators I want to highlight, we're both professional firms, but I think the biggest thing, as, you know, as leaders in the community, you want to make sure you always have that consistent coverage, so we strive ourselves on a backup to the backup to the backup plan. What I mean by that is if you hire internally, which believe it or not is our biggest competitor, those folks are unfortunately going to get sick, they're going to go on PTO, they're going to take vacation, they're going to go to training, you know, who's going to cover, who's going to fill that gap of coverage when they're gone, and that's really something that Safe Built does a really good job at, is we, out of the gate, make sure that we have folks that are trained to back up the folks that do have to leave at some point. So, there is that seamless integration, and coverage never wavers. Couple other things, is community involvement, you know, as I mentioned already, community involvement's important to me personally, but also Safe Built, we're the only firm that I know that has a documented program that actually gives a percentage of our revenue that we receive back to the community, and that's a whole host of things, I mean, it could be a habitat for humanity, you know, we just painted some homes last week for Hanover Park, Illinois, we do quite a bit with the YMCA, fireworks for another town we sponsor, I mean, the list goes on, it's really catered to whatever's important to you folks here, some towns have scholarship programs, participate in that, and, you know, that does add up, it just shows, you know, a lot of folks, although we're here during the day, we're also part of the community at night, our staff is local, the last thing we're going to do is bring someone from Cook County, Chicago, to be an inspector or planner of you here, you know, we hire locally just for that, this will be a dedicated staff for you, that's going to mesh here, and be integrated here real well. It's another nice thing, too, is let's say something happens, you don't just have that one employee, you have the team of Safe Built, and I always, Gurnee, which isn't too far from here, they called me about, this was about four months ago, and I always tell the story, because this is really the advantage of having a firm that operates in 27 states compared to a firm that doesn't, is Gurnee's planner of view retired on Friday, lots of development coming with the park that they have there, and hotels in the area, they said, hey, do you have anybody you can get here and have a butt in this seat, 40 hours a week starting Monday, this is Friday afternoon, said, hey, we want to help you, we understand the need here, but let me just check, and we were able to help bail them out by finding somebody from Atlanta to fill that seat, be there locally, physically located, we do planner of view form for a short term, while we were able to find someone to fill that void long term, and I don't know of any other firm that has that type of bench, that capacity to be able to do that, and that's just having operations in so many large areas throughout the country. Was it the best long-term fit? No, but still someone that was ICC certified, that was able to get the job done and do a good enough job. Last thing I think is a good important differentiator is our proprietary software, and other big advantages, it's called Community Core, something we provide to you. Now, we all know how much an ERP system costs, we all understand, the software's going to be up to $100,000, $300,000 plus your service fees, this is something Safe Built gives to you, and it's optional, we can operate on the system you have, but it's something that we've mentioned and offered, because it increases the efficiency for both sides. Now transparency is increased, anybody here can have an ID, a user login, and actually check the status of a permit, where is it, what's happening, what's next, all our inspections are cloud, the system's all cloud-based, inspections are done in the field on iPads, if they're in an area where there's no cell service, as soon as they're back on, automatically get uploaded, on-demand reporting, automatically generate reports, you actually see the stats, the raw data, and this is a huge, huge positive city of Toledo, new mayor came in, younger leader, very progressive, and strong union community, you can imagine the dynamics they're going to deal with, and he said, Steve, our inspectors are doing six inspections a day, how, I have no visibility on this, and I let him just set up the software and showed them, six inspections a day, and then we went in and just showed them how we kind of operate, and it was over double, just by geographically routing the inspections, just by making sure everything was done in the most efficient way, we don't want our folks, technical experts, to be doing a ton of paperwork, when they could be doing more of the work that they're qualified to do, and just one of the many success stories, I'll stop talking there as much as I like, we're talking about Safe Built, but happy to entertain any question about us, where we've been, I can tell you, it's an exciting firm to be a part of, I personally enjoy it, and here ever since, and I really think this is the future for local government, it's firms like us, because it's just going to come to a point, you know, Wisconsin's in a lot better financial shape than Illinois, but it's just the reality, you know, folks don't need everything of their own, and this is going to be the future, so that's what we're here for, but I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you, Steve, so we'll take some questions, I have a couple jotted down, I'd like to know about our points of contact that you would expect, would we have multiple points of contact depending on what we had questions on, or is there one person in your organization that would then reach out to others to get questions answered?
Sure, so you'll have multiple layers of contacts, but you'll have dedicated staff that'll be your day-to-day contact, you'll have myself, and then you'll have your state operations manager, Katie Lima, who's a new parent who couldn't be here tonight with us, but she's also lives local as well, and we do that for multiple reasons, want to make sure you all have someone you're going to reach out to.
Did anyone else have other questions they'd like to ask?
Is the software package that you mentioned, is that included, like, is there like an annual fee, or is there any sort of?
Nothing, optional, all included, if you'd like it, and it's something we could demo, too, so if there's ever a time you want to see kind of how it operated, what would the advantage be, we can do an electronic demo, and let you dive in, you know, we bring it up and show you how to enter, how we enter the permits, what the process looks like, what the actual viewer to view it, what that would look like, too, but it's pretty slick.
And so, the way that your fees work, it's in the proposal, 75% of the fees, how long would you expect us to get 75%, and I'm guessing you'd expect that percentage to go up?
It could go both ways, so we do an annual agreement, and while we do that, in the spirit of transparency, at the end of the year, or right around then, we'll sit down and we'll say, hey, here's the fees that came in, here's the activity, here's what we, you know, here's the percentage that we took, and then we adjust it accordingly based on all those figures, so it's something that we do on an annual basis. North Canton, Ohio, I just actually was in a situation where it went way down, and development spiked up, the work came up, but the fees were so much higher that we were able to adjust it accordingly, so it's something that we, again, we want to be transparent, it's a partnership, this is long-term, it's updated, it's something that we work on every year, and that's something that I'm part of as well.
And so, the village would still, we would still set our prices or our fees towards the village?
Correct. That's right, yeah, village sets the fees, we just honor those and work with those, we can, you know, we can help analyze some surrounding communities to make sure you're charging the appropriate fees, but, you know, that's something that the village does on the own.
Do you see any weaknesses in your company?
Yeah, we're growing too fast, I think it's an industry problem to find good people, not so much in this area, Florida, we were joking about Florida, everybody's, I mean, from where, everybody moving to Florida, so, that's the toughest to find qualified folks. Oakbrook, Illinois, I live in my spot right next door, we just hired the building official, and he's close to retirement, but he wants to go down, and his wife is, wants to enjoy some weather, so it's people, and it's on the municipal side, it's on the private side, so we're, and that's probably another differentiator, so we have, you know, we're private equity held, it's no secret, we have more resources to find people and invest people than a local government does, we're not using tax dollars, we're using investors' dollars, so they see the need for that. So, one of the big things that I started, my wife works for the VA Hospital in Heinz, Illinois, is we reach out to the VA Hospital, we reach out to trade schools, the county I live in, DuPage, we work with DuPage WorkNet, so there's other local organizations like that in this county, we actually work with those folks, all these agencies provide these good programs, they actually pay us to train folks, so now this is federal dollars coming in for us to hire someone that maybe is a, you know, not skilled yet, doesn't have the technical training, but we have plenty of different administrative tasks we can have them do, we help ramp them up, and, you know, there's countless success stories like that, but it's a big, it's a problem, it really is, and it's why at Safe Built we try to take care of our employees, and honor their PTO, give them good benefits, because not only you're competing against municipal government benefits, you're also competing against a population of candidates that's really low.
Okay, any other board members have questions, or staff questions? Okay, thanks so much, Steve.
Very good, thank you, I appreciate your time.
We'll be in touch tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we can move on to 6B, which is a presentation by General Engineering Company, and is it Mark, that's what that's tonight?
Thank you for having me this evening.
Thank you.
I guess, I couldn't find two more companies that are certainly alike, Steve said almost everything we do, and I think that's an industry trend, where we try to copy each other, so we also have, we work off iPads, we also have transparency with you to look at that free software, that you can get on the cloud, look at the inspection activity, and ask questions, so it's very similar. I would say probably what maybe sets us apart a little, is that we're local, we're only, we're located in Portage, and we have a staff of about four or five structural engineers in our department, which kind of helps our inspectors locally in the field work through problems with contractors, probably one of the biggest things that separates us is we're willing to work with contractors and kind of push them toward a solution if we do have a problem, if something comes up and there is a violation, we can work with them on some different ways to correct that, because we have a large department, a lot of people in that department are familiar with the construction industry, but the company has been around since 1912, I started there about 22 years ago, fully certified in everything except commercial electric, and I do the Village of Wanakee, help out in the city of Portage, help out in the city of Menno, and I also support Jim here once in a while when he needs help in the area, in the town of Cottage Grove, and the Village of McFarland, which we work right here. As far as inspectors, Jim is a local guy, he'd be assigned to this area, and like I said, he works in the town of Cottage Grove, so he's close by, we could set up office hours here, or, you know, we're fairly flexible as far as Jim's schedule goes. I would say that pretty much covers it, there are almost duplicate companies, our company and their company, other than the fact that I think we offer a few more services locally than they do, but we've been in business a long time, got over 200 accounts in central Wisconsin, I think we've only had two leave us, and I think one of them, they hired a relative, someone in the village to work for the inspection department, but we've held on to everybody for a long time, I guess, Wanakee, we started out just helping out that community, which we'll do, if an inspector retires, we'll get a phone call, can you come out and help us out, and if we get situated, we may hire someone, and that's how I started out in the Village of Wanakee, and we've been there for 20 years, so, we've done that for quite a few other villages, two larger villages, but we have all sorts of different accounts, large and small, so, we have state plan reviewers that work for us, we have another state inspector that just retired from the state that works for us, and the heat support gym with commercial inspections in the area, so I think as, it's getting hard to find building inspectors, so I think we have kind of a good relationship with the state, so we're taking on a few of their guys when they retire, and we're glad to have them, so, and like I said, our companies are pretty much parallel in what we do, so I won't bore you with all the same details all over again. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Mark, I guess I'll ask you the same question, would you expect us to have one point of contact, or multiple?
It'd be Jim.
Yeah.
Jim would be your point of contact, and we support him, there's backup when he goes on vacation, and generally, I think, maybe our commercial guys would start working with him, and they'd be kind of his backup if he's sick, or whatever, just move into the area, and what we'll do is, we'll probably train two or three people with your systems, so if Jim does go on vacation or is sick, someone can move right in, and they aren't fumbling through the iPad or the permit process, or whatever the procedure is here.
Okay, did any other board members have questions?
I'm just curious, in general, who pays the fees, is it mostly developers, is it the homeowners, does it depend on what the project is?
It's generally the contractor, the homeowner pays the fee to the village, and how we work it is just a flat fee, and our pricing is similar to Safe Built's, other than the fact that you take a percentage of the fee, whatever that percentage is, you feel you need for us to support the program, so, but yeah, it's all, it's, you know, you don't pay us anything if you don't write any permits, so.
I guess I just was comparing our current, the costs, to what the costs are of your fees, and some are, you know, some up to three times higher sometimes, and I just was wondering how you've handled that in other communities?
Yeah, and some of those smaller ones that are higher, like fences and stuff, you know, a lot of the local communities have taken back fences, just because we spend a lot of time on fences, on where they're located, and that seems to be the biggest problem, that and decks, but our single family and our commercial are pretty much parallel to what you're already charging, so.
Okay, and when you say the communities have taken it back, what does, what do you mean?
They issued just an administrative permit for a fence, because a lot of times you're like, only personnel, or whatever, that are more familiar with the people, and fences are generally a problem, maybe a lot of times, between neighbors and stuff, so it gets to be spent a lot of time, fences, and it gets into that, and the location of fences, because we only require, you know, a hand-drawn plan, where, you know, technically, if you're telling me you're placing the fence on the property line, I have to believe you unless, you know, you require a survey, which is $200 bucks for a fence, so, that's generally where the problem comes in, so, a lot of communities will just charge a lesser fee, and just say, we'll take care of it.
Okay, anyone else have any questions? All right, well, thank you so much, Mark, I appreciate you being here.
I'd like to say I'm a little happy at Safe Built, because they have an account in Florida, I mean, I don't know if we're in there. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to item seven, discuss and consider operator license permit application for licensing year July 2019 to June 2020 for Scott Petry. Chief, did you have any?
No.
No, okay. All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the operator license permit application for licensing year July 2019 to June 2020 for Scott.
I have the motion and the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. All right, item eight, reports from village boards, commissions, committees, so we'll start with peer court.
We met on November 19, and we had Jay Keifer there from Briar Patch to give his report, we started off discussing the board's decision to take traffic violations off, and there were just a few questions that Mark had, Mark Hefinger, who is the judge, and he questioned where that decision came from, and I was there to be able to give them the board's view that we were the only community doing this, and there was really no need for it, and then we discussed how we're placing more of a restorative justice without being bogged down with traffic violations and traffic cases, and then Jay also brought up how their new system of the circle is being, is more and more popular with the families and the people that are involved, because it gives everybody a chance to work together, and it really allows the youth to feel like they're part of the process instead of being talked down to, and then I did question, Jay had mentioned a few meetings back, several months ago, that there might be a grant that would come through for Briar Patch that would allow more communities to take part in the peer court system, and he did verify at this last meeting that if that were the case, then the cost that they would need from the village would go down, and that would be credited back to us, so, hopefully that all goes through, and they get more people in the community, because what happens is, what they need for operations, kind of gets pooled together, and they're able to disperse, make it less for communities. Next meeting will be January 21 at 5:15.
Okay, great, thanks, Jeff. So, we'll move on to the library planning committee, Melissa?
We met on November 20, introduced the members, reviewed the purpose of the committee, which was to get community feedback and find out the capital and operational costs of a library, I was appointed the chair, and Ann the secretary, and Chinaman, we discussed outreach, and what types of outreach we should do, such as surveys and public meetings, timeline, nine to 12 months, and lastly, we did future agenda items, which the members just kind of spitballed all the things that they'd like to know before we reach out to the public or community, or what we would need in a library to determine the cost associated with it. The next meeting is this Wednesday at 6:30. The next meeting is this Wednesday, um, at 6:30 and we're going to try to have it on the first Wednesdays of the month. Although the next one after this is January 1st, so I'm not sure about that.
What time, what time's your meeting?
6:30 at the municipal services building.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll move on to Deer Grove EMS.
Uh, we met Thursday, November 21st. Um, calls were similar for the month prior. Calls for the year are down mostly because of, uh, less access on that I-90 corridor, um, where the construction's going on. Also discussed, there was a joint meeting with Cottage Grove Fire Department about new developments where boundaries meet town, village. Uh, and they, the comment that was made from the chief was we hope to prevent singular access points in any areas when secondary access points can be easily built. Um, it's really a safety thing. Um, let me see here, approved, uh, let me see here, approved, uh, sent in the paperwork for inter facility transport operations plan, uh, into the state with the idea that that would start on February 1st of 2020. Um, and that would only be done with a non-primary, primary ambulance, uh, with the, uh, with the Stoughton Hospital. Um, renewed Johnson and Block for the, um, 2019 Deer Grove EMS financial budgets. Next meeting is on, uh, December 19th at 6:30 in, uh, at the fire station, Cottage Grove.
Thanks, John.
Uh, so Parks, Rec and Forestry is up next. Uh, so we met on Thursday, November 21st. Uh, we talked about tree planting on Highway N along the, um, bike path that was recently put in. And we had some input from James, the forester, and talked a lot about the visuals and how Public Works has talked about the turn lanes and the speed on the road and how there's not a whole lot of space there. And that in combination with the bike path is made out of different materials and sidewalks so that it doesn't stand up to tree roots as well. Um, so right now we're going to hold off on tree plantings along Highway N, uh, next to the bike path and see how it all falls together as the whole stretch of the bike path. So we're just kind of, we're gonna see how it all shakes out over time. Um, then the Bach and Park soccer fields will have a lot of construction going on there next year. So, uh, we're gonna let, we rotate around and have some soccer fields rest, uh, every year. So we don't need major maintenance. So those soccer fields will be offline next year. Um, and we also talked about national fitness campaign, which you'll hear more about. It's a fitness court that has all sorts of body weight resistance type activities. Uh, so they're talking about, we want to put that in West Lawn Fourth Edition. Uh, so we're gonna start the master planning process for that and that'll probably be part of it. Um, that's kind of the main topic. Sean, you have anything to add? Okay. Um, we're not meeting in December, so our next meeting will be the third Thursday of January, which I don't have a new 2020 calendar yet. So, uh, third Thursday in January. Um, so we'll move on to landfill.
Uh, we met last Monday, the 25th. Uh, it was a pretty quick meeting. We looked at the, um, invoices from Strand and agreed that they, they were right in line with everything. Um, there was an extra bill of, to fix a turbine that's on top. If you remember the last meeting, um, that was a pretty lengthy meeting, uh, there was a turbine that stopped moving and they went out and inspected it and that's the case. So, um, I think the bill was like one, it's 57 or 47. Or 57 and we just split it in half between the village and, and the town. So, uh, next meeting will be the, uh, 27th of January at six o'clock.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, joint fire. Um, our meeting was not as short as landfill. Um, so the town board approved to replace the phone system. The contract has been signed and the work will start soon on upgrading the phone system in town hall in the emergency, emergency services building. Um, the trims and lamps with LEDs and security lighting will be paid for from the emergency services repair funds. It had been previously approved in July, just wasn't indicated where the money would be coming from. Um, we approved, uh, the $7,400 quote by High Tech for replacement of the air conditioner and furnace with funds out of the repair fund. Um, the, uh, doing it together saved money and, um, the, they'll figure out when to replace the air conditioner because the furnace still works currently, but it's just a matter of time. Um, then we approved the duct unit replacement, um, in the second floor furnace because it's cold up there. Um, that totaled 4915 with those funds coming out of the emergency services repair fund. We approved replacing 18 light fixtures in the bay with LED light fixtures for $4,445 out of the repair fund after January 1st. Um, and the fire department indicated they would install the lights. Um, and so all of those, um, Chris Hampton will be looking into focus on energy grants for reimbursement with, um, the funds going back into the repair fund then to, um, the card access system will be looked at again, starting in September, October of 2020 to be possibly paid out of the 2021 budget. The brush truck, um, or the, the rapid response vehicle costs $145,290 and the village and town approved a total of $125,000. So the remaining $20,290 is to be paid out of the Pleasant Spring, Pleasant Springs contract proceeds. And, um, it was approved, um, for the town and the village to own that vehicle jointly. And then we reviewed the, um, fire contracts. We didn't go into, um, any specifics about changing them at this point, but we went through them pretty well and noted some things in there. Then the chief did his report. We started the year with 28 members and we're at 39 members now. They gained 12 new members with the membership drive, so it was pretty successful. They're down a little bit or about even as last year for calls at 247. Engine three's controller, um, which, uh, controls the pump was not working. So the manufacturer didn't make that anymore, so they had to rebuild it. Um, and we should have it back already. I don't know. I haven't heard anything, have you guys? Um, but that shouldn't have cost more than $600 to rebuild it. Um, the chief applied for a firehouse subs grant of $20,000 to use for eight sets of turnout gear. That includes the coats, pants, boots, helmets, hoods and gloves. And we'll find out in the first quarter if we receive the grant. Um, the chief will use any surplus in the budget for turnout gear since we have so many members. We're getting low. And, um, the fire department's assembling a UTV to be used for brush fires and medical calls. Um, they received a 50/50 DNR grant and the association is paying for the other portion. The next meeting is January 27th at 6:30.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, next up is law enforcement. Oh. Yeah. Oh, we have John side here. So, thank you.
We met on Tuesday, November 26th. Uh, the only item of new business was to discuss and consider donation to the local food pantry in lieu of paying the $25 for the village, uh, parking ticket during the holiday season. I believe there was a memo in the packet, um, that kind of outlined that, but the committee decided that, uh, rather than we run it a little bit earlier, we'd bring it to the board and get board approval, um, to start it actually tomorrow and run it through the end of January. So I, I think, uh, Chief, you mentioned one item. Uh, they're looking for five, uh, non-perishable, non-expired food items to be donated for the $25 in lieu of the $25 parking ticket. So if they bring in one non-perishable item, it'd be dropped by $5.
Correct.
So, um, so the committee recommends approval of that, uh, starting tomorrow if the board's good with it and running that through January. And because we were just made aware of it, uh, kind of after the Thanksgiving, right around the Thanksgiving holiday, we're looking to possibly run it, you know, beginning in November, you know, through the holidays into January next year. Um, we will be meeting again here before the end of the year. Let me pull it up. I think it's in two weeks. Uh, there's going to be some end of year funds that the police department has, but just re-appropriating the, the funds in a different account. Uh, so we're going to be meeting on December 17th to take a look at, uh, the chief's recommendation for re-appropriating the funds that are already available to the police department and to some other, uh, accounts that might need the funding. I miss anything, Chief, later?
No, I did confirm with Bryn Mar, which runs the Cottage Grove Food Pantry, that they thought this was a good idea and are very happy that we're doing that. They emphasized the need of certain items that they would like to receive and they, I also let them know that this would be on Facebook and we would be mentioning their name. When we hand out parking tickets during this time, we will put a little flyer in there so people know they have that option.
Happy holidays.
Yes.
The alternate side parking started, right?
Yes, it did this weekend. So we do two weeks of warnings and then we would write tickets after that.
Okay. Who came up with this idea? Chief?
My wife.
Right.
Self it goes well. That's your idea.
But an Ohio police department did it and she saw it on the internet. So that's why we came up with it.
Interesting. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion that we, um, give a donation to the food pantry in lieu of paying the $25 park, the village parking ticket.
Do you have a, how long you want it to go through?
Till the end of January.
Till the end of January?
Yeah.
Okay. So I have a motion.
Second.
Motion and second. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. I hope we get lots of donations. We can, we can drop off donations even if we don't have a parking ticket, is there?
Yes, we will have a barrel in the police department and we'll accept the donations there. And I told the food pantry, we would collect them and bring them to them.
Okay.
Because they're pretty part-time, part-time.
Maybe get its credit.
Oh, that's lovely. Get your parking.
Give you a voucher.
Yeah.
Get out of jail.
Good for the whole year.
Right.
Is there a specific items? Are you gonna have a list somewhere or?
Yeah, I'll put it on there, on our Facebook page. But they're looking for breakfast items.
Okay.
And canned goods.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Uh, so we'll move on to item nine, reports from village officers. Lee, do you have any updates for us today?
I do. Um, but this is, this won't be the regular, um, legal briefing. About 38 years ago, I started as the village attorney and, um, at that time I was 30 years old and, um, everybody looked old, um, especially Joanne Kessler. And, um, I thought, well, I'll never look like that. But time has a way of passing and Joanne, who used to just terrify me, now everyone says, well, she's such a sweet little bitch. Okay. Um, but, um, if you, uh, do the math, and this is just a rough guesstimation, but, um, I've spent approximately 1,000 nights, um, at village board meetings, which may account for the lack of hair and the gray to some extent.
Is that a warning?
No, well, no, I, but I, um, I've talked, been talking about this with John, um, Williams and with Matt. And I, um, said that what I would like to do is to start, um, pulling back, um, and that I would, uh, I have every intention of continuing with a transition. Uh, I've been through those and, um, I, I do not want anyone to think that, uh, I'm abandoning ship because I'm not. Um, and I am pleased to be able to tell you that all of the developer agreements are either drafted or almost completed. So we've got like five or six of them out there. And, um, I can talk, I'll talk more about this, uh, at the next meeting after John gets back. We have a chance to, to talk. But I did not want this to come as a surprise to, to anybody and, um, I'm not dying, I'm not sick, but I am 66. So, um, it's time to, uh, step back a little bit and, um, I hope that I'll be able to work out something where I can continue to serve the village in some fashion. So that's my news.
Lee, not our usual story, but thank you for many, many evenings here. We haven't shared as many as a thousand together, but thanks for bringing stories from some of them.
But, uh, but I do, I just want people to know that what makes this possible are, are the people and the staff, um, here. We, a lot of you don't, haven't had another administrator or other park people or another police chief. And, um, I have. And, uh, we are extremely blessed to have a staff like this. And honestly, if you had told me that I would have done this for this long, I just would have laughed hysterically. Um, but I've loved doing it and I hope to be able to continue to make contributions.
Thank you, Lee.
That's it this time.
All right. So we'll move on to 10, communications and miscellaneous business. Um, we have our vouchers attached. Does anyone have any questions?
Got a question. Uh, is that stepping on workshop stipend? Is that for, uh, Parks and Rec program?
I'm sorry.
Ronald Door, a thousand dollars?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. And then the other question I had was for, uh, the donation in Monroe Grove School District for new beginnings, $735.
Yep. Uh, annually we donate that amount and they, they have a group of high school kids that need some guidance and we, uh, give some work forward on the village.
So we donate to the school district versus paying them? Is that how that works?
I believe they get paid, yeah, we just kind of make the donation. I think the, the kids that are in the program get paid in all the way, but, um, we've done it for years before I started here, but we get some tasks for them to handle that.
Okay, good.
And Mr. Mayfield, actually, if anybody's familiar with him through the school district, Mike's a fantastic mentor to those kids and, and we get some free labor, so it's everybody.
Great. Thanks.
What, um, what are the trash receptacles? Are those like the ones that we have at our house or are those different? From upbeat?
They are like similar to what's at Dublin. So it's just, it's a, a holder and the receptacle incense. Just nicer than a 55 gallon drum.
Fancy trashes.
Um, I have a question about the Narcan. Uh, is that because we use some or is it because some expires and they have to replace it or how does that get budgeted?
It's because we used it. Um, and we'll commonly use a couple doses every time we go out on the same person. And then we have repeat customers. And so we have to replace it and there is no, we use regular operating funds to replace it. It's expensive.
Yeah.
And that's buying it directly from the manufacturer.
Sure. Um, so is there a certain number that we keep all the time and we have to maintain that number or?
Yes, we have, uh, five different AEDs that have the Narcan attached to them. So when the officer goes in the house, they can respond to a heart attack or a drug overdose or anything like that. So that we have to have five of them ready to go at any time.
Okay. Is that, is that, um, do the, does the ambulance respond then too?
Yes.
So does that get added onto their bill or?
No, I wish it did. I've tried that.
[laughing].
They won't pay for it if we do it. And, you know, with their staffing, sometimes they're not in the village, so it's 10 minutes to get from Deerfield here. If we waited that long?
Right. No, yeah, that would not be worth it.
And I have not told them to be judicious in their use of it either. It's use it no matter who it is.
Yeah.
Or what the circumstances are.
Of course.
Chief, is there, so you said it's like sometimes you get repeat customers when it comes to that. Is there a ticket or a violation that comes with overdosing?
Yeah, because generally they're getting caught with drugs.
Okay.
And/or paraphernalia and/or they're violating some sort of bail conditions not to use drugs or alcohol, all those things.
Okay.
But when we've tried to get money out of people in the past, it's almost impossible because they're drug addicts.
Yeah.
And they've worn out their welcome everywhere where they could possibly get legitimate money.
Yeah.
Sorry to say.
Yeah.
But then they, they would be referred to a court or something because of the ticket that can, I mean, I know it's, they could be referred to get help or, you know, that then goes through the whole court process on that side.
Right. Yeah, they're going to court, so generally it's, it can be our municipal court or it can be state court. Usually it's state court because they, they violated bail conditions or something like that. So a lot of these people end up in drug programs, but they reoffend.
Chief, is there a drug court in Madison?
Yes.
So is that part of like our, I guess, because there is court costs and fees that are charged to the person then too, isn't it? But like police costs and fees don't get put on there, do they?
Well, we're fining them for possession of drugs sometimes or paraphernalia, so some, sometimes that comes back to the village. Most of the time it goes to the state or county. But if the village board wanted, we could try to bill people for Narcan. I mean, if someone has a heart attack and we use the AED, that's, that's a lot of money every time too because the pads are disposable and those cost upwards of $100. But that's someone having a heart attack.
Right.
Yeah.
And it's not by choice, is it?
No.
Right. I know, it's just, I mean, I, I think that it's, it's something that is needed. I mean, it's definitely, but, but for the, when people constantly need it, then that's a problem. So that's the only reason why I'm asking the questions. I'm not saying there's any solution.
And if it gets to the point where it's really a drag on our budget, obviously then we'd have, I'd bring it up at budget time or discuss it with the administrator. But at this point, it hasn't become that bad because last year, we got a donation from the Wisconsin Department of Justice because we take part in the drug takeback program. So they gave us a bunch of free doses last year.
Oh, good.
And that carried us through almost the whole year.
Okay, good. Yeah, I hadn't seen it on there before, so I just wanted to know a little bit more about the process.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion, second?
A second.
Motion second. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. I didn't have any correspondence. Was there anything that came in? Okay. Upcoming community events. Of course, this weekend is Christmas in the Grove, starts on Thursday, Shop for a Cause, parade and tree lighting on Friday. There's a whole bunch of events on Saturday. Check the Chamber website for the schedule. We are making Christmas cards for seniors in our community at Pigly Wiggly from noon until four on Saturday. So if you want to sign a few cards, that will go to some of our senior communities here in town. Stop by the table there. Anyone else have any other events coming up? Okay, so future agenda items. Matt, was there anything that we want to mention here?
Maybe some items from plan commission. There's a potential change in the zoning code that's gonna have a public hearing on adding an additional single-family square footage. From, right now, the minimum is 10,000 square feet and 7,500 is being looked at.
For lot size.
Yeah, lot size, yep. So I'm sure some other things will come up.
All right, well, thank you. So I'll make the motion then. The Village of Cottage Grove, village board, will enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State statutes 19.85, parentheses, one, parentheses, E. Deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. This closed session is for negotiations in tid number five and negotiating terms of a contract for building inspector.
I'll move the motion.
All right. Motion and, did Jeff say second?
Yes.
Okay.
Set at 20.
Lisa caught it, she's got it.
Burpee?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Limber?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Valencia?
Aye.
William?
Russell?
Aye.